Welcome to the October 22nd, 2019 City Council Meeting. Roll call, please.
Mayor Webb?
Here.
Mayor Protem Aubrey?
Here.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Here.
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 Emocation, Pledge of Allegiance. Councilmember Lucero, would you please?
Let's bow our heads, please. Holy Spirit, source of all life, we gather together as the elected officials of our community, charged by the people, to discern our future together. We are a diverse body, brought together by the same spirit. We pray that we will be faithful to the work at hand, to set aside our own personal agendas, to seek out the greater good. Open our minds and our hearts, to listen in for your will for us, and bestow upon us your wisdom and grace. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Council, approval of the revised agenda is in order.
Move approval of the agenda as revised, Mr. Mayor.
Support.
The discussion, dissension. We have an agenda. Special presentation is a proclamation naming October 2019 as Bullying Prevention Month. Whereas bullying is a significant problem within the United States, including verbal, physical, and cyber forms, and whereas one out of every five students reports being bullied in some form, while one out of every three students have been victim to cyberbullying, and whereas students who experience bullying are at increased risk for poor school adjustments, sleep difficulties, anxiety, depression, with an estimated 160,000 students missing school every day from fear of being bullied, and whereas the city of Hazel Park supports the right of children and adults alike to live in a safe and working, welcoming environment, and whereas the month of October is National Bullying Prevention Month, a campaign is in response to the need to raise awareness by bullying that provides communities with an opportunity to educate people about their role, about the bullying prevention. Be it known that I, Michael Webb, the mayor, do hereby proclaim October a Bullying Prevention Month in the city of Hazel Park, and I call upon everyone to foster a community that is free from violence, harassment, bullying, and discrimination. Therefore, I proclaim. I hope everybody takes it to heart, because it is a fact that a lot of children have a lot of difficulties and anxieties over this. Thank you. Civic announcements. Anyone wishing to come up and speak for civic announcements? I believe we have Sandy Kruger for Halloween Decor Awards.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Sandy Kruger, 1313 East Jarvis. I'm with Neighborhood Enrichment. We've been passing out, this past month, we've been passing out awards to homes that have been decorated for Halloween season, and we started this, the second week in October, and we pass out 12 awards every week, and we have one more week to go. We did invite the businesses to participate, but so far, they're not participating. Just one business participated, so I hope that we get some this last week, so. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Sandy.
One other, is there anyone else for civic announcements? Public discussion, I'll open in a moment, if you don't mind. Civic announcements, anyone? I'll close civic announcements to the public. Civic announcements from the City Council. I do have one I want to recognize, Sutar Sutar, and all the people that helped build the Scout McPherson Park play structure. It's been a big win. We started it back in June, the dedication Saturday, this past Saturday, with the Sutar family, and it's really turned out to be a wonderful experience for our community and the children here, and I think it's going to help us grow, and they plan on doing some more events with this as well. Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, again, I want to thank all of council for showing up to the park dedication. I want to thank all of council for participating in the build. The entire community came together and participated. It was truly a magnificent experience to see the community come together like that. Thank you to the generosity of the Sutar Sutarak Meyer Foundation, and again, this is a great community. Everybody comes together. It was an amazing accomplishment. But the mayor is right, they're not done yet. I think they're going to do something else within the next couple of years again for us, so let's stay tuned and see where we go.
Thank you. Now we'll open up public discussion. Michael Allen, would you please have a slip of paper in?
Michael Allen, 461 West Maple Dale. Thanks for calling. I just couldn't wait to get up, so.
It's okay.
Just one last minute announcement for this Saturday is trunk and treat at Hazel Park, put down by the Rock Center and City Edge Church. We have a blast on this. If there's anybody that still wants to decorate the car, come out and hand out candy, we'll show up, just show up. We're going to start at 1:00, so.
Where is that?
About 12:00, 12:30, Scout Park. I think it's going to be awesome this year. Last year was the first time we moved it to Saturday afternoon. Really enjoyed that, because it was light out, you could see the kids, you could see the costumes. A little bit safer, a little more room in Scout Park. Also, this year, we're planning on having two hayrides running this year. There's also, we're going to have a haunted dumpster that will be set up as a photo booth, so bring a camera, take pictures of your kids. A lot of neat stuff, and this really works with community involvement. It's not just City Edge Church, it's the people of the community that they come together and really make this work. I know, Mike, you've been there, Beth, you've been there since the beginning. I think this is our sixth or seventh year.
And the weather might cooperate this year.
It looks like it's mid-50s, partly sunny, so no rain. Keep your fingers crossed. So, you don't want to come out and decorate a car and, you know, just come check us out, see what's going on, and have fun, bring your kids. Thanks.
Thank you. Ken Muhha?
Hi, my name is Ken Muhha. I live at 1412 East Evelyn. First, I'd like to say, I'd like to have kudos to Tom Jones, who, I took a ride on my bike the other day and went down the, oh, it's a service freeway sidewalk down there, and that sidewalk was as flat as could be, and I liked the way he did it. He ground it down. I know he saved the city money doing it, and I could say somebody with a stroller, or walking, or riding a bike today are definitely safer in this city because of that, so my kudos go out to that project. I also would like to add to the tree planting park thing, and whoever got the grant for that and whoever followed it through, I want to thank you very much. It's really nice to see trees in our park again and really take, also, kudos to our group here that did that. And the other item I'd like to talk about is, I really care about my city. I walk there, try to do four miles every day, but as I'm walking along, I do check the sidewalks and the houses, but I see a lot of houses that are, like the ones that are specifically, I know before 1950, there was no insulation in these homes, and I would like to see, I know myself, I wouldn't want to buy a house without insulation. I don't care who I am, so I think the city needs to look over its policies on houses that are rebuilt and resold, because in a lot of cases, there's tens of thousands of dollars made, and I'm not so interested in the profit, but I would like to see a home brought up to what I consider the 21st century. There's all different ways of doing it, and I know that whoever would be in charge of it would have to look into different things, like Lath plaster, and, but there is ways of insulation in a home if you didn't want to pull down the drywall and really get at it, so I'd like to, hopefully, my city will step into the 21st century and be a leader in this fight, so, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ken.
We have a Jesse Robertson.
Jesse Robertson, 2 through 3, 53 Hoover Avenue. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have come before you tonight to speak about a subject from the meeting earlier this month. When discussing the ordinance to amend the City Council with respect for the allowance of issuance of licenses for the adult-use marijuana industry, if I got that right, the Council engaged in extended debate over amendments regarding limits and wording. Amidst nearly two hours of discussion on the same agenda item, a number of considerations came up that caught my interest, and more importantly, things that escaped mention by any of those present. Perhaps one of the most key subjects revolved around the discussion of the number of licenses that would be permitted. There are, I will agree, strong arguments for any given number. However, it never really came to mention that while a large number of licenses would in fact permit more future opportunities for those that would like to do business, it would also dilute that opportunity for those who already had a license or were already positioned to receive one when they first come out. Additionally, a major concern, and perhaps the biggest one, that drew my interest was that I heard repeatedly mentioned the notice that the City Council could change this number at any given point. While this is in fact very true, it does impose its own level of risk. For business owners, the prospect of doing business in Hazel Park relies a lot on expectations and reliability. They would like to know that they can come in and do business with the expectation that things will be able to stay the same, and that a new council isn't going to suddenly rip up all the previous agreements or change the rules on them, and this could make their business untenable. It doesn't really matter which direction a new council goes. Either they could go bigger, or they could go smaller. It's the mere fact that it could be unpredictable would still be unfortunate for them. And it is worth noting, last November, Hazel Park passed Proposition 1 by the second biggest margin of any municipality in Oakland County. The city is strongly in support of adult-use marijuana being a safe and legal thing. That means it is now up to the Council and administration to best execute the residents' will, with the goal being not just to have an industry that includes the adult-use market, but a sustainable one that will be around for many years. Thank you.
Thank you, Jesse. Anyone else wishing to come up for public discussion? Close public discussion. Thank you. Consent agenda. Motion to approve a consent agenda as presented, Council?
Your Honor, I'd like to pull Item 5 for discussion, and I would make a motion to approve Items 1 through 4 with discussion on 4.
Support. A dissension to that? A dissension? We'll go into discussion. Councilwoman Holland?
Yes, Consent Agenda Item 4. At a previous meeting, I'd made a request of administration for, is this appropriate? For a list of the businesses along the John R. Corridor, and I wanted to thank administration for providing this. There's issued, conditionally granted, pending, and it tells us what business license or what building the status of that is, and this is a really good start, and as we know, there's a couple of properties on here that aren't on the list that are in violation of quite a few ordinances, and this is a really good tool that our code department can use now to go after. Thank you.
You said Item 5?
Yes. Item 5, I have some concerns about receiving this document, and I think that we should probably have a roll call on whether or not we accept this.
And for what purpose?
I don't believe that a council, well, let me rephrase that. This council makes appointments to boards and commissions. This council removes people from boards and commissions, and really, the proper procedure would have been for this council to raise their concerns with administration and bring it back to this table for a vote. I honestly don't feel that this person is off the council, the board that he's on right now, because it was an improper action.
Ms. Klobuchar, City Attorney. Is there a clarification on this issue?
Was this matter, this was part and parcel of a closed session, is that true?
Correct.
Okay. I do believe that a closed session would be improper to be discussed at the City Council meeting, but we could certainly make arrangements to follow protocol in how to discuss such matters that were related to closed sessions.
Are boards and commissions allowed to go into a closed session, or is it supposed to be public in the Open Meetings Act?
I do believe that you are allowed to have some closed discussions and sessions as part of your executive board.
Personnel matters are, and they're one of the things that are allowed for closed sessions.
I really disagree with that statement. I would love some clarification on that.
Can I also just clarify that as the letter states, this is a recommendation for receiving file by this board to make the final determination. This is a recommendation by the board.
I don't feel it's proper.
Okay, well then, should we investigate the issue from the attorney and give us an actual written opinion on this issue?
I think what Mayor Protem Aubrey is stating is that this is before council to approve this decision, so.
I want to look something up real quick here. I apologize for doing this. Back in May, I made a request for some clarification on the Michigan Planning Enabling Act 33 of 2008, and I believe that we are in violation of that with this discussion and with the actions that were taken by this board. We need to be really careful.
Well, with personnel matters, that is usually allowable in a closed session, and recommendations then are made, so there's been no final decisions made, but certainly a recommendation is appropriate.
Actually, I believe the decision to recommend termination was made in an open session.
That is correct.
Yes.
So, there were no decisions that were made in closed session, but the decision was made in an open session, so.
It's still, this is kind of frightening that because of personality issues, someone who is a founding member.
No, 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 no.
That's not an accurate characterization.
Absolutely.
There's no information here that says why he was recommended for removal, so please do not make assumptions.
I'm not.
Make a roll call, please.
You just stated assumption.
Roll call, please, Jim. Bigley.
Councilmember Holland?
No.
Was there a motion in a second? Point of order, point of order.
I'm sorry. Was there a motion to?
Is this something that?
Are we removing this individual, is that by accepting this?
Wait, we're on the consent agenda approval.
We approved the consent agenda.
And now?
We're in a discussion on the consent agenda. Now we're in a discussion on the consent agenda.
Jim, did we approve the consent agenda yet?
No, it's still in discussion.
So, this is the consent agenda. This one item has been pulled from the consent agenda for discussion, so the appropriate motion to approve the other items, and then handle this one separately.
So, we need to vote on Items 1 through 4 separately, on the consent agenda.
That is your option. That is a way to handle it.
I would say to the motion maker, please change his motion to Items 1 through 4.
I would make a motion to accept and approve the consent agenda Items 1 through 4.
Support.
A dissension to that?
Dissent.
Okay, one dissension. Okay, do we need a roll call on Items 1 through 4?
I think you have a.
I think we have a.
A 4-1.
4-1.
Approval for Items 1 through 4, Mr. Mayor.
All right, Items 1 through 4, one dissension. Any other dissensions? Any more discussion on Items 1 through 4? Motion passes on Items 1 through 4. Item 5.
I would make a motion that this recommendation is not accepted.
Do we have a support?
Well, since it's off of the agenda, I will support, since we've taken it off for discussion.
For discussion, again.
I have some. This is a board, this is a, you know, the Hazel Park Arts Council, there's a number of different boards just like this, and I would, as the president of the board, Michael Pierce, has stated, pursuant to Section 2.50.040 of the Code of Ordinances, members may be removed when it is deemed in the best interest of the Arts Council, and I'm sure that code refers to other councils. I wouldn't, I'm not sitting on that board, I'm a co-founder of the Arts Council, but I would not vote against what their board has done, and I don't see any possibility really of some kind of a violation of the Opens Meetings Act or other things, so I'm not in favor of voting against what the board is recommending.
Okay. We have a motion, we have support for discussion, and it leaves us for a roll call.
Point of order. Can we get clarification on what a yes and a no vote mean for this motion?
Yes means you accept, no means you don't accept.
I believe the motion was to not accept.
Yes, the motion is to not accept. So, a yes means you.
Not accept.
You do not accept, and a no vote means that you accept.
Sorry.
I'm sorry. I know, this is why I asked for clarification.
A yes vote means that you do not accept this document. A no vote means that you accept this document.
We got that?
Yes, thank you.
All right, just want to make sure everybody. City Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmember Holland?
Yes, with discussion.
No more discussion.
Councilmember Lucero?
No.
Mayor Protem Aubrey?
No.
Councilmember Sullivan?
No.
Mayor Webb?
Yes. Motion passes. Mr. Avey reports. Mr. Mayor, members of council, we're pleased to bring to you second reading and ordinance to amend Chapter 5.04 Commercial Marijuana Facilities, City of Hazel Park Code of Ordinances. We have before you with some of the changes that you requested, and some of the changes that we made based upon discussions with the applicants in terms of practicality and consistency with state law, we bring to you what we hope is the final version that we can pass tonight and begin the process of bringing recreational marijuana licensure to the city of Hazel Park. Do I have a motion to accept?
I'd move approval of the marijuana, commercial marijuana facilities ordinance.
Do we have a support?
Support.
Do we have discussion? Who wants to go first? Anyone? Okay, no discussion.
Can I just say thank you to Jen with Donaskus, as well as Melissa and Amanda and Jeff and Ed for listening to my hours of questions and responding?
It is just a normal weekly occurrence with you, Madam Councilmember, but that's what I think makes you a good and thorough councilmember.
I appreciate you, again, taking the time today to address my questions, concerns, requests for clarifications, so just want to let everybody know, we have beat this to death. I think this is something we can all be proud of.
Go ahead, Councilmember Lucero.
If everybody could just turn to Page 6, if you've got that N at Page 6. I don't have more. It says in there, "An increase in the number of licenses issued to a facility or an increase in the number of facility locations shall only be considered by a recommendation from the city manager and by a resolution of the City Council."
You may strike that recommendation from city manager out of there.
Because I would think if the City Council decided we wanted to visit it, we would send it to the administration to bring it back.
You would, and that's how you would do it, and if we wanted, if I wanted you to revisit it, and I thought there was reason to do it, I would simply communicate that to you in the form of a report.
You're going to strike N?
So, no, you're not going to strike N, you're simply going to strike from a recommendation of the city manager to buy a resolution of City Council.
Okay.
Okay? You guys may, by resolution, of course, as been stated by the public discussion podium, you are sovereign, so you may extend, pardon me, the number of licenses any time that you wish.
Any other comments?
Nope.
Thank you, Andy, for allowing my brain cells to catch up after a very long day. This reminds me of a conversation we had, Page 6, letter E.
Yes.
We discussed amending that language as well.
E? Page 6, letter?
I don't see 6.
Sorry.
It's on Page 5 now.
It's on Page 5 now.
I'm using the redlined version because it helps me track all the changes. I guess it's Page 5, letter E. It reads, "All facilities must maintain dual licensure of the equivalent license type pursuant to the MMFLA and the MRTMA as defined in Section 5.04.020M and under the administrative rules." My concerns with this was it requires, so our intent was that anybody with a recreational license was also required to hold a medical license, however, it also reads that anyone with a medical license is required to have a recreational license, and I don't want to obligate business to that unless it is required under the state law, so I just ask for clarification on either amending the language or showing me documentation that shows that it's required both ways.
Is it required both ways?
Please come to the podium.
The MRTMA does require that an applicant hold a medical license prior to applying for an adult-use license.
Does it require that a medical must also hold a recreational?
Not in statute, no.
Okay, thank you, Jen.
So then, does ours?
What I would then suggest to satisfy Mayor Protem's concern is to insert the word MRTMA. All MRTMA facilities must maintain dual licensure. Okay?
If I may further, relative to discussions that were had by the council at a previous meeting, the concept or the idea behind creating a dual licensure was to restrict or limit the number of locations, essentially the footprint in the city. So, by eliminating that dual licensure requirement, what you've now allowed for is 12 retail locations overall, as opposed to six retail locations.
I'm not trying to limit the entire dual licensure, I'm simply trying to make that our current applicants, if they don't want to apply for adult use, aren't required to apply for an adult-use license. But any of those that do apply for adult use, any applications for adult use have to have the medical license as well, but I don't want to require every current.
Medical operator.
Medical operation to, if they don't want to do a dual operation moving forward with medical and recreational, and they want to be solely medical for whatever purpose they decide, I don't want to require that if it's not required under the state law.
So, that's not what this is saying, then?
That was my.
Well, this is also allowing for adult use only, not medical. You're allowing for now, if you remove the dual licensure requirement, or you don't reword it?
Ed had said to make it say, "All MRMTA facilities must maintain dual licensure."
MRTMA?
MRTNA facilities must maintain dual licensure.
You're not removing the dual licensure.
You're not removing the dual licensure.
Just specifying that adult use.
It's adult use facilities.
If they already obtained one.
So, all facilities.
All?
MRTMA.
Under the MRTMA must also obtain an MMFLA.
If they already hold one.
Well, and for the first two years, the only folks that can apply for an adult-use license are medical licensed medical operators.
There's a distinction, really, without a difference.
Yeah, it really is.
Everybody who is with a medical.
But this one doesn't seem to be around in three, four years.
Right, and very likely, the medical may not be either.
Right.
They're basically weeding that out.
But it's also.
No pun, that's.
It's.
It's very likely, you know, if it happens, you know, legalized nationally, the medical part may go away. We don't want to require them to maintain licensures that aren't required by the state or.
I think initially, we do. I think initially, we definitely want.
And Jen's saying that's.
The two licenses for the. The two licenses for the recreational applicants, I think that should stay in there. I think Councilwoman Aubrey's only concern was that there could be an applicant that we have that's already been approved for a medical that does not wish to pursue recreational. I don't know that that's likely, space aliens might land at Nine and John R., demand to talk to Jack Lloyd.
I haven't heard from applicants, I don't want to make assumptions.
If I may offer a little bit of insight as well, relative to the medical application process, as it currently is situated right now within the state, the criteria and the scrutiny that the applicants undergo for a medical license is far more stringent and scrutinizing than that of an adult use license. So under the medical vetting, the applicants are scrutinized with regards to their financial ability, whereas under the adult use licensing laws, they're not scrutinized for their financial wherewithal.
Mr. Mayor, why don't we think about it from a different perspective then? Why don't we just place a sentence at the end of E. that says, "Council may consider a waiver for a standalone medical marijuana business."
It would probably be the easiest.
That way, we're all set.
Further along those lines, obviously a dual licensed facility is going to be an increased source of revenue for the city.
The reason that it's more stringent for the medical is that the strength of the marijuana is stronger, therefore it's being a little, you know, more restrictive.
Yeah, it will become, I think, a niche market, but it will still have some value to some customers, so.
There is a lot of people, it does help the medical part of it. I knew two or three people that the medical marijuana did aid in their recovery and during their, trying to get off their opioids. All right. Anyone else? Any more comments? Any more changes? Any more footnotes?
I am satisfied, thank you.
We clear on the changes, council?
You have that recorded, Jimmy? Do you have it recorded, Melissa?
Yes.
Do you have it recorded, Jen?
Yes, we have it.
Thank you, you're awesome.
Thank you.
All right, we have a motion, a support. Any dissension? Hearing none. Second reading passes.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I want to thank, you've thanked me, you've thanked my staff, you've thanked our consultant, I want to thank you guys for this. Again, this thing is a compromise. I know not every one of you is happy with every provision in this particular ordinance, but I think that coming together, we've crafted something that is in the best interest of the city of Hazel Park. There is, this is a revenue source for the city of Hazel Park. As I've warned you all a million times, we have some looming problems that will come. These bills for pensions and retiree obligations will come due, they're already coming due, and we need additional sources of revenue, we will need them in the future, to meet those obligations as well as meet the service needs of our residents. And I hope that this ordinance complies with the wishes of our voters and our citizens, and that it also generates the revenues that we expect. And I hope that this industry keeps its promises, adds jobs, adds new businesses, and is a positive force in this community. When we did build the park, I will tell you that a number of people from this industry came forward and they built and they hired people to help build, and they came out and they built themselves, and they bought lunch and snacks, and they were an important part of the volunteer corps that we had to build that park. So I hope that that's not just a flash in the pan and something that we're seeing during the selection process, but I hope that that is part of who they are as members of this community, and they keep that sense of community spirit, because this is a great city, we're going to be good partners with you, but we expect you to be good partners with us. That's all I have.
May I make a comment, please?
Yes.
I think it's very important, I'm seeing and hearing about some misunderstandings about the hard work that's been done by the city, and it should be made perfectly clear that this ordinance does not authorize unlicensed marijuana activity, marijuana home occupation, or marijuana accessory use, and that any unlicensed marijuana activity, marijuana home occupation, or marijuana accessory use is strictly prohibited by federal, state, and local law, and that important information is the second paragraph of 5.04 of the Hazel Park Municipal Code, this ordinance, that's very important.
For the record, this ordinance absolutely prohibits marijuana growing as a home-based business. We cannot counter man's state law in terms of the caregiver program, but I can tell you, if you are a caregiver, we will enforce laws about smell and noxious odors and zoning. Again, you can't rent a house or buy a house in Hazel Park and grow weed in it without it being occupied by a human being, okay? And there's a certain number, amount of square footage that human beings have to occupy in a home for it to be a residential use. So again, your own little home-based marijuana business may very well be illegal in the city of Hazel Park if you're not following the rules completely. And the most important rule is, it shall not smell.
Your Honor, through the chair, thank you both for saying that. That's been one of the biggest concerns that I've been hearing, and I appreciate that you pointed that out, that it's in the ordinance and it will be enforced.
Madam Councilwoman, we're serious about writing tickets for stinky weed houses. So we're going to continue to write them, we're going to continue to prosecute them. Our judge fines people responsible, they pay hefty hundreds of dollars of fines, so, you know.
Question I want clarified, a caregiver cannot just occupy a commercial building and start growing as a caregiver facility. As we well know, we had one particular situation, is that, or is that not grounds for us to not just give a code violation, but to prosecute?
Yes, we're going to prosecute them criminally with code violations. Unfortunately though, this is no longer a violation of drug law. So while when we went in there with our administrative search warrant and we had the net team there, what we found was basically a violation of zoning and building code and an unlicensed business. So some of those are misdemeanors, we issued misdemeanor tickets, which are criminal tickets and could carry 90 days in jail and $500 fine.
Should we make, can we make those any stronger?
That's it, that's all you can do, understand?
The reason I say that is because the people that have invested in, to the industry and have paid their dues and have got approved, I don't think it's right that they have to be subject to these black market facilities.
Agreed, and we're going to bust them, as you saw with my pictures that I was so happy to send you guys on a Friday afternoon.
It was a good bust.
Because it was a good bust. Okay, I mean, again, in the old days, we would have seized all that stuff. But we've got to remember now that we're operating not under drug law, but
Because according to the new
Unlicensed businesses.
New standards in which the state is mandated, with the really high tolerance of clean, you know, THC products, where there have to be stringent testing laws. We don't want to have anyone, I would feel bad if someone died due to the fact of, you know, the wrong batch of marijuana or stringent strain of it or whatever, you know, kind of, the vaping kind of opened a lot of our eyes in which direction this could go. But I'd like to see it, keep the industry safe, and if we can do that by preventing these illegal grows, that would make me feel better.
Well, there is a pending case right now before the Michigan Supreme Court. It stems from an issue out of the Byron Township whereby it was determined that a caregiver could locate anywhere in a municipality without a license. However, that is currently being appealed to the Michigan Supreme Court. The judge had initially ruled that the MMNA preempted the zoning enabling laws, however, I think it's, I think it's very, very clear, trying to get around laws is illegal when you're doing illegal things. And you cannot be running illegal electrical, you cannot be doing things that you're not supposed to be doing, and we depend on our residents to report these things and to make them known so that the city can do an appropriate investigation. The wheels don't always turn as fast as people want, but we're always here, our ears are open, we want to know and we need to know. So if you hear, see, or smell something, if there's something suspicious, if you report it here to the city, if you report it, it will be investigated and it will be done appropriately and safely. We recently worked with the police department with an individual who thought they could just plant all the plants they wanted to in their backyard, and all they had to do was put up a cheap little plastic tarp around it, but all the kids from the school were kind of walking through that area, and that is not allowed, it's not what this law represents. This law is a responsible law, and this is one that must be followed, and we will do everything we can to enforce the laws appropriately.
And my expectation is the Supreme Court's going to side with cities on that pretty obviously.
Hopefully.
Yes, looks like it.
Just a little teeth.
But again, you end up with these referendums when the legislature fails to act, and the legislature failed to act in the face of strong public opinion favoring legalization over time, and when they don't act, you end up with referendum, sometimes these referendums are
I think the vaping
Special interests based.
Really opened up their eyes as to they really need to get on board and straighten out the legislation so it actually makes sense.
Well, I I definitely want to thank Jen Zelinski for always keeping us up to date and apprised on everything, whether it's the latest case law or the statutes that are happening and how they're being applied. Working together has been an amazing benefit to our community, and I'm very grateful for that experience, so thank you.
Thank you. Any boards, commissions? Hearing none, tabled items, none, new business? Any councilmembers have any new business they want to bring up? Moves us to communications from department heads, any department heads want to bring anything up new? Our DPW Director, Tom Jones?
Hello, Mayor, Council, just updates on our wonderful Orange Barrel projects out there. Nine Mile did switch their traffic flow today, traffic's now in the outside lanes. They're on schedule, they're shooting to be wrapped up within three weeks, so it's a great thing. John R. is hot and heavy north of Chestnut up to Ten Mile, they're got a lot of cement they're pouring very quickly, it's looking good. Woodward Heights, a lot of work done this past Friday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. Pavement's been put down in front of the rec department from Pilgrim to South Chrysler, and then there's still a portion they're working on between Woodward Heights, between Patel to Hazelwood, there's one more layer of asphalt to go down. Also, the leaves are definitely falling today, I want to remind all residents, please do not rake leaves into the street, please bag your leaves into the brown leaf bags, or you can get a sticker from City Hall or DPW for yard waste and put that on your 35 gallon can, please do not fill your 95 gallon gray cans that were issued, that is not acceptable, they get way too heavy, that's the issues with those, please keep them to the smaller cans and the yard bags. That's all I have.
Thanks, Tom. Are we going to get Woodward Heights restriped this year?
The plan is to get it restriped from the rec center to Hazelwood. I was hoping that the asphalt would have been finished now, I say the leaves are blowing.
It's kind of hard to see the lines as
Yeah, we know the striping there is
We all, I know we are, I just wanted
We're waiting on that last portion to be capped and then put in the lines, I'm hoping the weather's going to hold up on this.
All right. So three weeks on Nine Mile, right?
Three weeks on Nine Mile, you know, weather permitting, but everything's been on target so far.
It's going to be great when it's finally done.
Thank you.
It's been a mess. Any other department heads want to have any informational items they want to bring up? Okay, city attorney, any other comments?
No, thank you, sir.
City manager, any other comments?
Yes, just a few things, Mr. Mayor. First, I want to inform council that just like about every other city in southeast Oakland County, we did end up in the action level for the lead and copper standards, so we're putting out a press release tomorrow morning explaining that to the residents of the city of Hazel Park in some greater detail, so stay tuned for that. I want to thank DTE, Mike Palchesco, for heeding my call on a Sunday when residents just had enough in the area just northeast of John R. and Nine Mile, when they lost power for literally the fourth time in two weeks. So they were out, they've been out there aggressively tree trimming trees in that area and in many areas across Hazel Park. I want to thank them, it shouldn't have taken this long, but I will tell you a secret, they do monitor social media, and they are receptive when cities threaten to make complaints to the Michigan Public Service Commission, all of a sudden, they become more responsive. So I think that's a good thing, and I know that we do have one friend over there, and he was the individual who was responsible also for the donation of the trees from DTE along with Relief Michigan, so a big thank you to Mike Palchesco at DTE. Speaking of the trees, that was an extraordinary turnout, the gentleman from Relief Michigan said we had one of the biggest number of volunteers at a tree planting that they had had this year, that was incredible. A lot of folks here, Ken and Al and Tina and Sandy, they were all out planting trees there with us, and it was a great event. Want to thank Tom Jones, I forgot to thank him at the park dedication for all of his hard work on many different issues, so Tom, you are appreciated. And finally, it's been two years since the last election, and you know, there's been a lot that has been accomplished. We are, despite the fact that Michigan's system of municipal finance is fundamentally broken, we are, we are running in the black, we have repaired or resurfaced just about every major road in Hazel Park. I know it's a giant butt pain right now, but in three weeks, you're going to forget all that when you're driving on smooth roads. So we're pleased to deliver that. Crime is the lowest it's been that we can ever remember. If you were at the neighborhood watch meeting, and a couple of councilmembers were there last time, you heard Chief give our statistics update, they're great news, great numbers, so thank you, Chief Bukels, and the ladies and gentlemen of your force who are doing a great job here. This is a great place to be, our values are going up, we've got new developments coming in, Hazel Park is still very hot, and I look forward to the future and to continuing to do great things for the residents of Hazel Park. I thank you all.
Thank you. Councilman LaPira?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, I want to thank everybody for all the hours and hours and hours of work on the marijuana slash cannabis ordinance. It's had, it's been such a moving target, repeatedly changed and changed, and then this, you know, here the state changes it on us and stuff. I also want to, it was, thank you to all the people that came out for the tree planting. We're going to be doing this for a while, there's a lot, I was just even looking at Tusky Park, I mean, last few storms that come through, I mean, Tusky must have lost like seven or eight trees in the last five years, and they were huge trees, so. The playground area, Scout McPherson Park needs, it'd be nice to have a little shade around there.
I think we can do that, again, Ken asked who, Serene Papakian was the primary force behind the application for the tree grant, so I want to thank Serene for her efforts in getting us those trees.
It is the election season, it has been a pleasure and an honor really to serve up here for everybody, I hope to be back next year, and I want to wish everybody a happy Halloween, and thanks, Tom, for reminding us about the leaves, it's one of those things I've tried to always remind people about, it's, people want to bring back leaves in the street, but it saved us so much money in different ways, we don't have to clog sewers, you know, just a lot of things, the weight of the leaves is lighter when it's bagged. And in the immortal words of Tom Solman, "If you love somebody, tell them, if you have children, hug them every day and tell them you love them." Thank you for coming out.
Thank you. Councilperson Holland?
Thank you all for coming out tonight, I'd first like to extend my love and compassion to the Schwartz family, you are in my thoughts and prayers daily, and I wish you continued strength, as you guys, you know, it's yours to share, but just know that I'm thinking of you constantly.
Thank you.
Just praying and hoping.
Thank you.
Commenting on the tree trimming, they came through my neighborhood and holy moly, is my garden going to be great next year? There's daylight in that alley, it's crazy. So they chopped the stuff down pretty good, and anybody now at the back of your property, if you don't have to have huge equipment, you can stay on top of it, and hopefully that prevents some of the outages. They were extremely aggressive, and my neighborhood were bringing them cookies and waters and coffees and saying thank you repeatedly, so it was wonderful, and I appreciate that aggression, the aggressive tree trimming. So it was wonderful. And I appreciate that aggression, the aggressive tree trimming, not the aggression.
And I'm glad that the residents are happy with that because in some areas, they've gone and, you know, people are complaining and things like that. Oh, the back of my house doesn't look nice. I told them in Hazel Park, Hazel Park people want to keep their power on. And everybody's been very supportive of the tree trimmers. So that's a good thing. So thank you all, residents.
And regarding the marijuana ordinance that was approved tonight, when we publicize this, I would request that we publicize in multiple locations to make sure we cover all of our bases so nobody can say they weren't informed or advised. And there's a couple other things I want to share with everybody. I don't think we're televised tonight, but I know most of you folks out here.
We should be.
Okay, cool. My grandparents moved here in 1942, and I have not been in my grandparents' house since I was probably about 11 or 12 years old. And I was invited to see the renovation and by the families that are in there now. And it's a lot smaller than I remember. But it was so cool because there were some quirks and things in the house that the family were asking about. And I was able to share with them where things had been and where the stove had been. And, and there was a pass through. And I had to explain to them when my parents, grandparents bought the house, they had one and a half kids. And then they wound up with four. So the house just kept growing. The porch would get enclosed and added on to. And then the porch would get closed again and added on to. And I don't know how they raised four children and two adults in that little tiny house, but they did. And the family that are there now, there used to be built-in bookcases on either side from the front, the original living room into the kitchen area. And they had china cabinets there where, and some of the glassware in there was the same as my grandparents had, so heirlooms handed down. So they are only the third set of people to own this house since it was originally constructed as probably a one-room cabin. And Ken, to your energy efficiency, they just had the crawl space insulated. They've updated windows and furnace. And it was, it was just a lot of memories. It was really cool. The bullying resolution I submitted, and I appreciate that being on the agenda. It also includes adults in workplace and out in the public and social media. And it does take a toll. It takes an emotional toll on all ages. And it's, you know, I'm guilty of it. We're all probably guilty of saying things inappropriately and acting out. And it's just a moment to reflect and be a bit kinder. And regarding the, I wish we'd tabled this. I, incompatible offices is something that's been on my mind. We really need to straighten that out, make sure that we're not in any violation of that.
And again, it's, it's simply just a question of, there are only so many hours in the day. So we will get on that, and I'll make sure that you get that.
I appreciate that. I know the request was initially made back in May, but it's, there's stuff going on.
She did the initial research. She contacted Jan, got some background from Jan. But then the other, this other issue that you're doing tonight and the other issues that she's had to deal with, simply, I think you know.
Yep, understood. And finally, it is election season. I look forward to seeing everybody out at the polls on November 5th. And I would just ask that if anyone has any questions about me, ask me. Don't believe what you see on social media and, you know, just talk to me in person. That's what I'm here for. I sit at this table to make the tough decisions, and it's been an absolute privilege to be here as we have some unprecedented growth in this community, welcoming new people, new people in my grandparents' house. It's just a wonderful community to serve in. And I appreciate everyone who's watching and listening at home for tuning in and caring enough about the city. And everybody who has been coming to all of these meetings. It's nice to look out into the audience and, and you hold us accountable when I can look you in the eye. Thank you.
Councilperson Sullivan?
I want to also thank the entire community, Jen, our heads of staff here, our city attorney, and everybody else, including the other four members of council up here with me, for all of the hard work on this adult-use medical marijuana subset of this ordinance moving forward. I do think this is a great opportunity for our community and to really listen to what our residents wanted and to address the concerns that people had. I wanted to say thank you to everybody that I saw out this weekend volunteering at the tree planting. Saturday, myself, Amy, and Andy were there. I think we personally installed at least three trees each. I was sore. I was very sore after. But it was really fun and it was really great. There were people from all over the state that came to help us. And then we had the dedication of the Sutar Sutarak Meyer Foundation Park. It was wonderful to have them come out and to meet the family and to present them with their plaque and thank them for their involvement in our community. They've really done a lot for us. And I hope that relationship continues moving forward. Want to remind everybody of trunk or treat, like Michael came up and suggested. It's a great opportunity, A, for your kids to get two uses out of their costumes. I know some kids, when I was little, I always wanted two costumes. So that's another kind of, you know, way that you can swing that. You can do a daytime costume and then your regular nighttime. That's this Saturday at Scout Park on the 26th from 1 till 4, right, Michael? 1 till 4. And then also remind people to be safe on Halloween. Please wear reflective clothing. Please wear lights, glow sticks, bring flashlights, and please don't let little children wear dark clothing and then move around in the city unsupervised. It's unsafe. Big thank you to DTE for really getting out here and addressing our residents' concerns. I drive past the south end of Hazel Park and I see them out trimming. And I've stopped and thanked them for coming out. And I sent a nice email over to the head of DTE as well and thanked them for really getting out here and addressing our resident concerns. And I wanted to remind everybody to get out and vote November 5th. You can check your precinct online. You can also still register to, for absentee ballots. We do have a permanent absentee ballot registration currently. So with no reason absentee ballot voting. So feel free to get registered, and then they just mail you your form. There is also, on this referendum, then, on this year's ballot, there's also a continuance of a, of a Yeah, the OCC millage. This is not a raise in our taxes. This is just a continuation of a tax that we already have. And it funds OCC and allows them to continue offering low-cost higher education to people in our, in our community. So I hope everybody considers voting for that. Thank you all for coming out. Lovely to see so many faces in the audience. And have a safe Halloween.
Sorry. It's been a long day, like I said. So first, I wanted to actually respond to Jesse. Jesse's still, yes, Jesse's still here. You expressed your concerns about there being some instability for business owners pursuing a medical, or pursuing a marijuana-related license. And I just wanted to tell you, I agree with you. There is some instability with the way things are right now, but that's because we're, we're merging into a new market. So I just want to let you know, I share your concerns. And I'm hoping that as this market gets established, we're able to help create some stability and continue to make these business owners feel welcome here in the community. So I just wanted to address that. I did want to address, simply with the item with the Arts Council, I just want to say that I think voting against any city board, commission, council that is wishing to make a recommendation to this body, a recommendation to this body that governs them, I think it's a dangerous precedent to set, to vote against recommendations. So I am definitely looking forward to hearing from our attorney on clarification on this issue. Two weeks ago, I let everybody know about the LPC legislation that was in the House that had passed for counselors for mental health. I'm excited to let everybody know that passed unanimously with the state senate. And related to the resolution brought by Councilperson Holland for anti-bullying, these two items are directly related. Bullying can lead to mental health issues, and the fact that we've protected the position of these mental health counselors in our state is important because, like I said, this is a life or death issue, and they can provide services to people that have been bullied and hopefully keep them from doing something like committing suicide. Happy or no, I was very excited to go to Felker and Kennedy Park, plant trees. It was great to see everybody out there. Some of the members of Neighborhood Enrichment were there, as well as some residents and our other tree volunteers. So that was wonderful, as well as the park dedication at Scout McPherson Park afterwards. Lastly, I just want to remind voters, this is the first year that we, so we have staggered terms here on council now. So this is the first year that you will not be voting for four people. You will be voting for two people. And I want to make sure that people remember this so that their ballot is not invalidated. So just remember, when you go to vote, November 5th is vote for two people for council, as well as for the Oakland County, or Oakland Community College millage renewal. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. I think everything's been covered. Thank you for coming out this evening. We've got a lot of business covered. We did work, do some work on this marijuana ordinance in detail, extreme detail, and we did quite well. I believe with trying to come up with a good compromise to otherwise a very touchy subject, depending on what side of the fence you're on. Also, I'd like to say, be careful again this Halloween. Keep your kids close. Definitely put some flashing lights on them if you can. Walking that way, the drivers can be, can see. And also the, what John R.'s done, we'll have a complete bike lane on each side. We have a lot of bikers in town. When they opened up the south end, there was a ton of bikes out there. And the other day, I see a gentleman in his motor scooter wheelchair because the street is smooth, and it's easier for him to get around. And it was, I seen him for years get around through the sidewalks fighting. I've had to actually help him over the curbs a few times by my business. It's nice to see that there's mobility being spread out through our community. With all the new sidewalk program going through, there'll be mobility through the cross streets within the next couple of years, completely, completely through the whole city. And then we have to face the water issues in which legislation has, and thoughtfully imposed upon our communities. And we're actually fighting some battles through courts now and trying to settle some things. And we're trying to get clarification on what the water bills are actually going to impose upon our residents. It may be another year or two before we get to that point, but it's something that we are keeping track of, if you have heard about it or read about it online. But I just want to say thank you for coming out. Smile, be happy. I know we've been here only an hour this time. So
Mr. Mayor.
Meetings have been pretty long.
If I could just say one thing, Halloween trick-or-treat hours, 6:00 to 7:30-ish, hand out candy. If you haven't handed out candy and you're a resident and you haven't done that, think about handing out candy this year. I'm going to do trunk or treat, but I'm also going to hand out candy at my I'm also, well, well, well.
Couldn't resist.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I can see who the cheap house is going to be this year. But hand out candy. I, you know what? My grandkids come over. I take them around the neighborhood, and they're so excited
They are.
To come to each of the houses. And, you know, when, when Mike's kids were little, he used to bring them by my house for trick-or-treat all the time. And it's a big tradition with my family. And I hope more of my neighbors hand out candy. Because if more of my neighbors hand out candy, more kids will come down my street and won't be stuck with a big bucket of candy again that I have to eat. So it promotes a sense of community. Hand out candy.
Yeah, my baby's 22 now, so. Sorry.
You're old.
We're all getting there. Anyways, thanks for coming out. Need a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Mayor.
Ascension. Everybody want to go home? Motion passes.